The motion is rejected, and then we will come back and deal with this next month. The next is any further comments, Ms. Skilruud or Mr. Scudder?
I do have one more thing I'd like to share with you. Based on the supervisor's report, the Illinois Department of Human Services recently increased their minimum monthly payout from $242 a month to $304. This has been 20 years since it's been reviewed, basically, a long time. And so this is welcoming in the sense that we have been talking about homelessness and unaffordable housing. This will help for those that are waiting to receive SSI, pending SSI, for those who have mental or physical challenges that anybody who's eligible for challengeable will have this increase as part of it. It's a general assistance that doesn't need a vote from you. I just wanted to make you aware of that and have it in the minutes as well, that we're going to change that in the new fiscal year, not until then, but in the new fiscal year. And we're not changing our levy because of it. We think that we can handle it within it.
Okay, thank you very much.
I actually had a request.
Oh.
And I will make this very brief, I'm sorry. In the past, we've had year-to-year comparisons of the activity and the requests that you've had, and if we could get those maybe quarterly or something?
Yes.
I think that's a good way to...
I'm a little behind on that, sorry.
Yeah, I just think it's a good way for us to understand the needs in this community, particularly with our council hats on when we have to consider...
I'll do that for the, let's see...
Financials.
January.
I appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Scudder.
I guess I just want to let you know that we're working through the border review process. We had 436 complaints this year. That's up 37% from last year. And there was a glitch on our website I wanted to pass on. Sometimes you might need to clear your cookies before you go to the City of Bloomington properties. There was a malfunction in the, I don't know the computer language, but there was something in the operating system that holds that wrong address. Once we cleared that out, some people are still getting the wrong address just because their system was holding the bad address.
Okay, a question from Mr. Scudder. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any public comments on Bloomington Township only? Seeing none is their motion to adjourn. Moved by Trustee Black is their second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Painter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, and we're going to, is there a motion to, I normally, because I'm such a softie, give us a break, but we are five minutes into the regular meeting time. So I'm going to go ahead and call the meetings of Bloomington City Council order if everyone will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malumbway.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Do we have any public comment? We do. Okay. We have, just to clarify, I have a regular mayor's open house on Fridays before typical Monday city council meetings, and that's where you can, if you want to get answers or questions responded to, or sometimes problems solved right on spot, we meet right around that table on 430 on Fridays. And that's where if you want to interact with us. This is public comment. Public comment gives you up to three minutes, and our policy is to not respond. So it's kind of like open mic night. But at this point, we're going to go ahead and start. We have four people who have signed up for public comment. You have up to three minutes apiece. Michelle McConnell, Patricia Fontaine, I believe, I apologize if I mispronounced her name, Thomas Hogan, and Rob Valentini. And so we'll do it in that order. Michelle, if you'd come forward, then you have up to three minutes apiece. Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening. Michelle McConnell, I live at 3907 Ley Lane here in Bloomington. I'm also the general manager for the Holiday Inn Hotel and Suites here in Bloomington on Empire Street, and I'm representing the Bloomington Normal Hotel Lodging Association. I'm also on the executive board for the Illinois Hotel Lodging Association. Thank you for considering a short-term rental local occupancy tax ordinance. The Bloomington Normal Hotel Lodging Association currently has 20 active members. Our guests are subject to 12% occupancy, 6% for state and 6% for town-city. A portion of the 6% local tax is part of the funding for our Bloomington Normal Area Convention of Visitors Bureau. Hotel occupancy this year in Bloomington Normal has decreased due to corporate travel declines as well as additional room nights in our community. This afternoon, I took a look at our Airbnb sites here locally, and we have 72 listings for the Bloomington Normal Market, 305 in Champaign. Short-term rentals are here to stay. They're only going to grow. Our members just want a level playing field and safety for our visitors. This proposed ordinance does not address life safety issues. Our hotels are inspected by fire departments. We are, we have worked on, I'm sorry, we have had our fire extinguishers inspected, sprinkler systems, exit signs, boilers, smoke detectors, heat detectors, CO2 detectors, all are inspected on a regular basis. I encourage the council to consider addressing these life safety issues in your short-term rental ordinance. We thank you for considering. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Patricia.
My name is Patty Fountain, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Tobacco 21 Committee at Illinois State University. I want to first thank you for the opportunity to be heard on this important issue of raising the minimum purchase age for tobacco and tobacco-related products to 21. Raising the minimum legal sale age of tobacco products to 21, more formally known as Tobacco 21, is an important emerging policy strategy to reduce smoking that complements and builds upon proven effective approaches. The momentum for Tobacco 21 was strengthened in 2015 with the release of an Institute of Medical Report. This report predicted that by raising the tobacco sale age to 21 nationally, over time, it would reduce smoking rates by 12% and reduce smoking-related deaths by 10%. More impactful still, when you look at the numbers, are the results in Evansville, Illinois. This was the first city in Illinois to pass a local Tobacco 21 policy in October of 2015. Since the ordinance was passed, the use of all tobacco products by high schoolers such as cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and hookah has decreased by 37.5% from 2015 to 2017. That's 37.5% in just two years. In recent years, at least 270 localities in more than a dozen states have enacted ordinances or issued regulation, raising the minimum age for Tobacco 21 sales, including 28 in Illinois alone, and Normal being the newest addition to that list. Tobacco kills 480,000 people each year. This is more than automobile crashes, gun violence, and opiate overdoses combined. The developing teenage brain is particularly vulnerable to the effects of nicotine, and more than 95% of addicted smokers started before the age of 21. Unless there is a trajectory change, tobacco addiction will dramatically shorten the lives of 5.6 million kids alive today, and that would be like losing the whole state of Colorado. Even though we have seen smoking rates declining in the U.S. in the last five years, e-cigarette use has exploded since 2014, threatening to undo our progress. FDA Commissioner Scott Glutti has called youth use of e-cigarettes an epidemic and indicated that youth e-cigarette use is up 77% from last year. That's 77% in one year. This is why we encourage the inclusion of all tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, and raising, when raising the tobacco age to 21. On average, American kids try cigarettes for the first time at 13.7. The primary source of tobacco products for these underage smokers, their 18- to 21-year-old peers. So I've given you a lot of information about the harms of tobacco and how other towns have seen change, but I haven't really talked about Bloomington specifically. So according to the 2018 youth survey of McLean County, 18% of 10th graders and 30% of 12th graders have reported using tobacco or vaping products such as cigarettes and other smoked tobacco, chewing tobacco, hookah, and e-cigarettes. That's a 12% increase in two years. In a survey done by students at Illinois State University, out of the 1,372 people who completed it, 57% of participants, majority being from Normal and Bloomington, strongly favor or somewhat favor raising the minimum purchase age for tobacco products. The survey also showed that of those who identified as tobacco users, 91% of them were before the age of 21. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Patricia. I apologize for trying to make you French.
Oh, no, that's okay, it happens all the time.
Okay, Thomas Hogan, and then Rob Valentini.
Good evening, City of Bloomington Council members. My name is Thomas Hogan, and my address is 701 North Vale Avenue in Normal, Illinois. I am here to speak on behalf of Tobacco 21, and I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to discuss the issue of raising the minimum purchasing age for tobacco and tobacco-related products to 21. There are significant reasons why the minimum legal sale age of tobacco products should be raised to 21. We have already addressed how the human brain doesn't fully develop until the age of 25, how a vast majority of those who smoke began before the age of 21, as well as the ability for people who are 18 years of age to enable the dissemination of tobacco and tobacco products to their younger peers. I would like to talk about some of the supposed arguments against the support for Tobacco 21. Some people claim that people are allowed to purchase a house, get married, or serve in the armed forces by the age of 18. Therefore, they should be allowed to purchase tobacco products, but quite frankly, those are not public health issues. Purchasing a house at the age of 18 does not program the developing brain for a lifelong addiction. Getting married at the age of 18 is not one of the leading causes of preventable death. Even the Department of Defense is going smoke-free by 2020 due to the health concerns that stem from tobacco use. The argument that people will simply go to a neighboring town is also not true. For example, following four years after the city of Nito, Massachusetts raised the minimum legal age to 21, smoking rates decreased over twice as much as rates in surrounding towns. Others may claim that this is a significant blow to the revenue generated by tobacco sales from the demographic of tobacco consumers that range from 18 to 21 years old, but this is quite simply not true. Nationally, the demographic of tobacco consumers who are between the ages of 18 and 21 account for less than 2% of the revenue generated by tobacco sales. It is time we recognize that there is an outstanding amount of research concluding that raising the minimum age of sales of tobacco products can drastically benefit the younger generations. They will be less likely to be saddled with a deadly addiction that could turn into a life sentence. It is my hope, and that of many others, to see the town of Bloomington leading the way into a healthier future for our younger generations. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, Rob.
My name is Rob Valentini. I was asked, Ken Schmidt asked me, I don't know, a couple months ago, to be part of the Transportation Commission, and I gladly accepted, and I said I would, I would be more happy to do it. Well, since then, I went to the last mayor's open house on November 9th, and I talked to Nicole Albertson, talked to several others about my ideal is to have not only a transportation commission, but have an ADA commission, and where they, that would help go along with helping with Nicole Albertson with the ADA coordinator. I think this would be a great ideal, because the way that some of these businesses and side works are in this general area downtown are not compliant. They haven't been, I've been to many of them to ask them why I get turned around, so enough is enough. been to many of them to ask them why I get turned around, so enough is enough. About approximately at 5:00 this evening, a lady in my apartment building was struck by a truck in the corner of Locust and Center Street. She was on her walker. The truck slid in right into her. As far as I know, I don't know any condition of her at this moment, but I just want to point that out. We need, we need better, better circumstances on what, how to handle things like this. So, but thank you.
Thank you very much. We move right along to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the city council would like to have pulled from the consent agenda under items, under, excuse me, item seven as presented? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, mo, mo, excuse me. Motion approved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Alderman Milamboi. If everyone will go ahead and vote electronically. Motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move on then to our regular items in our regular agenda under number eight, under number eight A, and this involves, of course, the, some of the presentation that we had in our committee of the whole meeting on body cameras for police officers, which is becoming a, an important trend throughout the United States. And this, one of the, one of my colleagues, Mayor Kautz from Minnesota, long has been an advocate of this at the U.S. Conference of Mayors and talked about many of the different benefits, and much of the academic research that's been done on this since has shown that it has helped to reduce violence against police officers and injuries, as well as citizens, and misunderstandings. And as I mentioned in the last exciting episode, as Dan Rather said, "The camera never blinks." So with that backdrop in mind, I will turn this over to our city manager, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll walk through the numbers real quick for the item that's before council tonight, rather than sort of rehashing what was presented at the committee of the whole. We did receive very good media coverage, and there's been other outreach efforts made by Bloomington Police Department. The numbers for a five-year contract to implement, fully implement the body-worn cameras is 175,000, just a little bit less the first year, and then ongoing years, two through five, it'd be just slightly less than 145,000. This does, in fact, approve the five-year, five-year contract. Excellent work done by Assistant Chief Baze, and if there are any follow-up questions, we'll bring him to the podium. Otherwise, we'll turn this over.
But not by cam like last time?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, but not by body, by body cam like last time?
He did. That was well received by the community, the way that he presented that. So, that's it, unless there's additional questions from council.
Questions, comments, motion? Alderman Black.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, excuse me, made, motion made by Alderman Black, second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if everyone will go ahead and vote. Motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move on to the next item, which is item 8B, and that is consideration of approving the 2018 tax levy estimate for the city of Bloomington and the Bloomington Public Library as requested by the Finance Department. And have, we have a very brief overview by Mr. Gleason, just to clarify the logistics, and then a 10-minute or so council discussion. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Last meeting, we discussed just what I call the menu of options on the tax levy rate presented in that meeting, that we could possibly cover the full pension obligation through a tax rate. Council chose to, you know, advance the property tax levy, a consideration similar to what we currently have. And Scott, if you would, come up to the podium. Scott Rathbun, Finance Director, is going to walk us through what the levy actually looks like and how we're faring with the overall EAV.
So what's before you is the tax levy estimate for the city of 20.3 million, and for the library, 4.9 million roughly. As everyone's pretty familiar with, the city is approximately 13% or 13 cents on the dollar of the total tax bill for the taxpayer. The library is roughly 3%.
And just to clarify that, that's for, it was mentioned, but just for property taxes, so that everybody understands. So for every dollar you pay in property taxes, about 13 cents comes to us.
Yes.
Thank you.
We've had a slight $22 million EAV increase over the prior year, 1.858 billion versus 1.88 billion. So that's a 1.19% increase in the estimated EAV. That translates to roughly $5.6 billion in a fully assessed value. The property tax levy in total, you can see this is just a diagram of how this is split, 46% roughly is for police and fire. This is where we get down to the kind of the meat and potatoes of the levy. For the city, we're looking at an actual slight rate decrease based on the current EAV of the 1.88 billion. So with that, we can capture a little bit of growth in the tax levy of $225,000 to help cover the maintenance of the city infrastructure. For the library, similar situation, a slight --
If I could just clarify for that, just so that, I know the media understands this, but just so that the public does, that means that even though we will be getting additional revenues that we are capturing for infrastructure, the average homeowner will see a very slight decrease in their property tax portion that the city levies.
Right, if the value of the home is assessed at the same value year over year.
Correct. I, again, I apologize, but I just want to make sure that there are no misunderstandings to minimize the number of questions and complaints that I get tomorrow morning.
Not a problem. Clarification is always well received. Similar situation with the library, a slight decrease with the EAV increase is resulting in a $48,000 capture of growth. The combined total then, you can see last year, we were at 1.3392% for a tax rate. With the current estimated EAV, we'll be at 1.338%, capturing a $273,000 levy increase to coincide with the growth in the EAV. Any questions?
And so there's roughly a 1.14% decrease that a taxpayer will pay to the city of Bloomington in terms of property taxes, if this is, if this is approved?
Yes.
Okay, just, I know it, I just want to repeat it for the record, and so that as much as possible that that is made clear. That is, the total value of property has increased slightly, and we're capturing some of that for capital projects, but some of that we're, in a sense, then returning to tax. We're keeping the property tax rate as, as flat or decreased as possible.
If the estimate, if the final comes in at the estimate, we'll experience a slight decrease in the tax rate.
Thank you so much. Alderman Black.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. I just want to take a moment and thank Mr. Gleason for last week's presentation, giving kind of a menu of options when it came to property tax. Those are the kind of policy-level decisions that we don't, we don't do as often as I would like, and I like that we made a choice last week about how we fund our pensions, and there's ramifications in what I think we'll pass this evening for the next five, 10, and then eventually 40 years, 50 years down the road. And I know that it's filing day for the candidates, and I look forward to hearing the local candidates talk more about how they're going to solve these challenges that are facing Bloomington.
Especially when you get on the side where you actually have to make decisions. Alderwoman Schmidt.
I have a question for our city manager, just thinking about the road ahead here. Assuming that we pass this tonight, we have some things that are sitting there percolating. Public Library has made a pitch to us. We know we've got O'Neill Pool. We know we have infrastructure needs. So how does this look as we go forward grappling with, with those issues and providing funding for those?
I think what I'll do in preparation for the FY20 budget is, again, provide that menu of options where additional revenue might be captured for consideration. And the first thing that I need to do is provide those opportunities, and then the task of prioritization, prioritization of capital projects becomes your task. One thing that we promised when we look at the FY20 budget is we're looking internally first versus externally. And actually, at the six-month mark, and Scott will be presenting this under the Finance Director's update, we're tracking very well, and that's through increased revenue and looking at efficiencies internally. The consolidation of Public Works and the Water Department, that's an ongoing savings of about $250,000 to $300,000 annually. So it's those types of efforts that, in preparing and then ultimately finalizing the FY20 budget, I hope to present to council those opportunities to do some capital projects that we have not been able to do up to this point.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And just, just to clarify, I also want to echo what Alderman Black said. Certainly, we deeply appreciate the extent to which you help lay out the big-picture policy items that the council's supposed to be responsible for, and it really helps, you know, embolden us to make the effective decisions as we move forward. And one of the options that I also appreciate is that when you let us know about different options for bonded, bonding these things. So in other words, if we have a half a million dollars in capital expenditures, that doesn't mean, okay, well, we can, we can afford a diving board and part of a pool. It's that we can take that and float that note over 20 years without having, raising any kind of questions whatsoever from our bonding agencies, because this is standard operating procedure, and possibly, you know, pay for a very large chunk of O'Neill Pool out of some of the savings that we, and that's just one example. I'm not suggesting that that's what's going to happen, but, so it's not just the $500,000 here, or it's the $50,000 there. It's that we can use that money, and if it's dedicated toward a particular bond, we may be, very well be able to do lots of things that help improve the quality of life and economic development of our community. So thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, is there, are there any questions of Mr. Rathbun before he leaves the podium? Is there a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderwoman Painter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. All right, if everyone will go ahead and vote. I pressed, doesn't like that. Oh, it was? Oh, it's on that one. Okay. Alderman, thank you, Alderman Mathie. Yeah, there are eight ayes, no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. The motion carries, and we move right along to item 8C, which is consideration of approving of a bond refunding of the 2005 and 2007 general obligation funds in the amount of $11,845,000, as requested by the Finance Department. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one's very exciting. Not that other items aren't, but this was on my to-do list, walking into this position in July, and very happily found that Scott Rathbun already was working on this. And that is looking and exploring opportunities with existing bonds. Do we have opportunities to save some money over the life of those bonds? Scott's going to walk through a couple of these where we do see an opportunity, and it's before council tonight, that we take this '05 and '07 general obligation bond and do not extend the life of it, maintain the current debt service on both, and if approved, we'll be saving about a little bit more than a million dollars through this effort. Scott? Excellent job on the part of Scott and his team.
City Manager Gleason pretty much summed it up. We really just looked at the 2005 and 2007 series that were refundable. This is the table that's in our budget book number two. You can see that roughly this goes out through fiscal year 2033. We looked at maintaining the same annual debt service, 1.4 million, and combining these issues into one with the lower interest rate and what we could save. This is a, an exhibit from Mesro Financial that we use as our financial advisor. This is the prior debt service, including interest. That's why it's substantially more than what we're refunding versus the refunding debt service. You can see the maturity difference that we're going to realize, realize here, and then the annual savings, which actually includes the net fees for doing the refunding, the financial advisor fee and the legal fees that we're going to be realizing over a million dollars over the term of the, of the bond refunding. Just through the slide in at the end here, I mean, it's a very brief presentation. It really speaks for itself, saving a million dollars, lowering the maturity down by three to four years. This is our credit rating. We're basically a solid double-A rated city. That really helps us when it comes to landing good rates out in the market. Any questions?
Questions?
So we've been at double-A for a while, I believe, right? So what do we need to do to get to the next level?
To be honest, I can't really answer that question to this time. I haven't done that, that level of research and had those discussions with the rating agencies as to why we're at that double-A status, but I'll find out and get that information to you.
Any other questions, Mr. Rathbun? Yes, thank you so much. We very much appreciate it. Appreciate your efforts. And on behalf, not just of the city council and elected officials, but of the citizens of Bloomington, thank you for proposing to save us over a million dollars. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Okay, moved by, wow, we've got, okay, moved by Alderman Milamboi, second by Alderman Mathie. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if everyone will go ahead and vote on this, and hopefully, we can get some. Once again, a unanimous vote. Eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Glad to make your job easier. Okay. As she's leaving us. We've got a couple more meetings, though, to put you through for if I are in brimstone. Okay. We move right along to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item D under regular agenda is a consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 39 of the city code to add a 6% tax on short-term rentals within the city of Bloomington. As discussed in previous meetings, this is something that we've done in partnership with the town of Normal. We have Scott Rathbun. Again, the finance departments of both communities have run the lead on this opportunity. We do have Community Development Director Bob Mart standing by if there's additional questions as well. Just requesting approval by council.
Okay. Questions of our city manager, comments, debate. Alderman Mathie.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you did in working with the town of Normal to make sure that this, you know, as we move forward, this happened together. It was a great partnership, and so thank you for that.
Alderman Milamboi.
I was going to say ditto, because I brought it up to Tim not long ago. It feels like this summer, as soon as you came on board, and here we are. So thank you.
Alderman Bray.
I appreciate these efforts as well, and I think there may be two, I'll call them parking lot items, that as we revisit this with, with Normal, we might want to attend to. One would be building in some language that would just align this tax with a hotel occupancy rate tax, so that when that changes, this changes, and you don't have to, you won't have a staleness problem. You have a natural alignment of that, those two taxes. And that's probably something, you know, both the town of Normal and city of Bloomington would, would like to do. And then I would think, secondly, one piece would be to address some safety issues, right? Let's talk about what this means once these folks are, I guess I'm taking it that these folks would register under our business registration program, and once we become aware of, of their presence in the community, then we'll potentially do some type of inspections of these properties perhaps. And I'm thinking about safety overall of, of the occupants. overall, um, of, of the occupants.
The inspection component, uh, would be done through community development, and, uh, at this time, uh, town of Normal's not going to do that, uh, but it's one that, uh, we are going to be in discussions as this thing, you know, gets, you know, gets on more firm, uh, ground and, and footing. Uh, we will try to move, uh, whatever advances simultaneously with the town.
That's great, and I, I wanna shout out to, um, Michelle McConnell for coming, uh, today and speaking to us in public comment about those very helpful informations she's shared, so thank you Michelle, and thank you for, for all you do in the community.
Thank you, and just to clarify, a- as we probably all know, we are not alone. Airbnb is always a subject, uh, or some version thereof, at the US Conference of Mayors, even though, and of course, they have made sure that they've been very prominent sponsors of the US Conference of Mayors, and made sure that they bought us some very, very, very lavish dinners, uh, but they will tell you, in spite of the fact that they are attempting as much as possible to lobby the nation's mayors on their, uh, their issues, uh, that they are not at all opposed to, uh, paying the very same taxes, and being subject to the very same kinds of safety regulations. In fact, at least they claim they invite that. So, uh, I, I think we have to understand that we're, we're part of a national trend and a national curve here, and thank you so much, thank you for the Hotel Motel Association, thank you Crystal Howard for, uh, your leadership on this, thank you Mr. Gleason, as usual, and our staff for taking the lead on this to make sure that Bloomington is on the cutting edge of these kinds of issues. Thank you. And so I'm actually, uh, at this point, I'm gonna see if there are-
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
I, I just wanna follow up on something that Alderman Bray said about syncing this up with the tax rate for hotel motel, is that something that you would wanna roll into a motion? Or is that, I mean, city manager have a, an idea about how we might do that? 'Cause I think, you know, sometimes we get in trouble when we don't kind of front-load this, um, you know, and then, then things fall away.
Let's first start with Alderwoman Bray. Is, is that what you had intended?
Well, I didn't know if, uh, since we kind of mirrored this with Normal, if we wanted to do that as a joint effort, or, you know, didn't want to break the synergy, but, uh, yeah, so, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Gleason?
I will follow whatever recommendation council has. But Alderman Bray is correct, uh, we, we were trying to mirror what, uh, the town of Normal, uh, was doing, and in fact, approved on November 19th.
Okay, all right. Any further questions, concerns? Um, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Be thrilled to have it.
So moved.
Okay, enough said, and seconded, uh, by Alderwoman Bray. If everyone will go ahead and vote. Motion carries eight to zero, there are no names to announce, Madam Clerk, and at this point, we move to the city manager's discussion and finance report.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Uh, real quickly, uh, do we have the upcoming schedule of events? And I'm gonna keep talking as we're, uh, gonna find those, uh, wanted to, uh, let everyone know in the community, especially, uh, Public Works Director Jim Karch, uh, shared that on our city's website, we do have a leaf collection update and schedule, uh, posted on the website. Uh, so you'll see, when you're part of the community, is gonna be hit next, uh, it's an area that, uh, weather just, uh, hit us a little bit early, and it's been a challenge, uh, but they're definitely, uh, trying to be on top of this, and, and one way of doing that is communicating to the, uh, public where we're at and when we're gonna get to, uh, their part of the community. Um, I didn't know, Alderman Mathie, did you have a question or a comment?
Well, I'll just tag on to the leaf thing, so, uh, with the snow last week, um, I saw a bunch of comments I responded to online, of the snowplows were having a hard time getting around the piles of leaves in the street, and I was saying, well, what the heck are the leaves doing in the street? Get them back on the curb, I mean, there's, so as a reminder, put the leaves on the curb, not in the street.
Understood, point taken, uh, and those get into the stormwater drains and cause problems, uh, there as well. Uh, we're gonna call, uh, Scott Rathbun, uh, back up for his, uh, uh, Finance Director report, uh, we are halfway through our fiscal year, and, uh, we are tracking, uh, very well. Real quick Scott, before I turn it over to you, uh, our schedule of events, our council meetings for, uh, December, just as a reminder, no committee of the whole, uh, we have council meetings on December 10th and December 17th. And, uh, since we are advancing a property tax levy that is not in excess of 5 percent, in fact, it's gone down slightly, there will be no need to hold a, uh, public, uh, meeting prior to, uh, this coming back in front of council. Scott?
City Manager Gleason said we are six month in, six months in. We are continuing to trend favorably with revenues, um, I continue to highlight the Home Rule sales tax. Uh, year-to-date, year-to-date variance, $385,000 of our prior year, uh, the budget variance at 376. I looked at last month to see where we were, um, trending as far as over budget, we were $341,000 over budget last month, so is it, it's continuing to increase the gap over budget, so that's, that's very good news. We did a little research on the state sales tax, uh, while we're down from budget, the, this, majority of this decrease over prior year was related to some significant, um, equipment purchases by a local business in 2018, so we're really not down significantly from the prior year, but it remains the fact that we are under budget for the year, but we took that into account, um, when we created the budget, so these little, these anomalies sometimes have a ripple effect through our budget, and we'll just have to manage through it. But all in all, we're still trending favorably franchise tax, we over-budgeted slightly there, but that's gonna be somewhat of a static number, that's not gonna continue to eat away. Hotel motel, um, it's been a big topic of the evening, that one continues, kind of continues to worsen, um, hopefully with what we did tonight, that'll help, but I think there's just been a decrease in, in business travel to the area. As I mentioned last month, we were gonna, after six months, we were gonna start updating the projected year-end, uh, column. I'm going to reorganize this for next month, I'm gonna put this projection, this is kind of the delta from the budget, here's our budget, so we're looking at a $400,000 increase in revenues, so for, it went from 85,005.90 to 85,990. I'll reorganize this so that it flows a little bit better, so it's a little bit more intuitive when you're looking at it. Um, but typically, not typically, um, this is essentially the, um, Home Rule increase that we're capturing here, and what I wanna highlight is, with Home Rule, um, the, the commitment we've made to McLean County, and we also have part of the increases that was initiated a couple of years ago, is also dedicated to streets, it actually ends up working out to be 10 percent of the total revenue gets allocated to McLean County, 10 percent of Home Rule gets allocated to streets, so if you look at the $400,000 increase in taxes related to Home Rule, you're, down at the bottom, you're gonna see this intergovernment expense went up by 40, and this transfer out to the Capital Improvement Fund went up by 40. So $400,000 increase in Home Rule really essentially nets out to $360,000, or, excuse me, $320,000 net increase to the city. Other significant variances that we're looking at right now, investment income, rates are going up, um, when you have a lot of cash balances like we do, um, we're looking at $125,000, um, increase in our budget in line for interest income. Down in the expense category, vacancy savings. Um, year over year, we're seeing, seem to struggle with, uh, filling some of our positions, so right now we're looking at a million dollars potentially, um, in salaries, $200,000 in benefits, over budget, or under budget, excuse me. Principal and interest, um, this is really related to the timing of our capital lease that was approved this evening, it's, it's getting approved about a month late, so, or a month or two late in the cycle, so this is one of those things where it's gonna have an effect on the current year budget, but it's just gonna get tacked on in year five. So we're just gonna have a couple months less of interest and expense for this year, but it gets pushed out to the end, I just, I wanna use this as kind of like a, an educational exercise, as far as like how to, some of the numbers kind of roll through our statements. But right now, we're looking at a $1.3 million potential surplus for the general fund. So, all things being held equal, we started the year with a $19.2 million fund balance, um, we're looking at $20.5 million fund balance. It's very good. For the enterprise funds, I'll just highlight, uh, the, the revenue line here, the trend is 50 percent halfway through the year. Water, um, that one can vary depending on weather and just usage, but sewer, storm, solid waste, where we put the fee increases in place coming into the year, those are tracking right with the budget, so that's, that's a very good indicator that we, we've captured those fees and, and we're trending favorably there as well. Any questions?
You apparently have left a speechless. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Any, uh, questions of our city manager? Okay, thank you very much, under the, uh, mayor's discussion, really I have very little other than, I wanna, uh, hope that everyone has had a, a great Thanksgiving holiday, and now we're kind of down to crunch time before the end of the year, and I wanna thank the entire council for all their hard work, our staff, and of course, our city manager and legal financial team. Uh, also today is the end of the filing deadline for the new city council elections, and so it's hard to believe we're in yet another election cycle, seems like we just had one. In fact, actually, we did just have one, it's just now we've, we're onto, to local elections, and certainly I, uh, wish all the candidates well, and, uh, certainly if any of them have questions, if they think, I'm certainly happy to, uh, hand them off to somebody else to answer them. No, actually, I'm, I'm also very happy to answer the questions too, I'm kidding, that's all I have. Alderman, any comments? Oh, Alderman Mathie?
I'm not a JC, but I just wanna give a plug to the JC's Christmas Parade is the Saturday morning, um, I, uh, usually volunteer as a road guy to stop traffic, but it's just a lot of fun, so, just a reminder, I think it starts at 10 a.m. and goes down Center Street, right? So, uh, also if you're driving, be aware that Center Street's gonna be closed on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, um, go a different direction.
Thank you so much, Alderman Mathie, anyone else? Thank you so much, and at this point, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, second by Alderwoman Bray, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you very much. Wow, we're adjourned early, and in spite of the-